All right. Good evening, everyone. I see seven o'clock has come upon us. I'd like to call a meeting to order. In front of you, you have the agenda for tonight's regular council meeting. Does anyone have anything to add? To it? If none, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll move the agenda to be moved as presented.
Thanks Conrad. Do we have a second or?
I'll second it.
Second by Richard. All in favor? Anyone opposed? Sorry, threw you off there, Ron. And that's carried. As well, you have the minutes from our last regular meeting on April the 27th. Does anyone have anything? To any corrections to make to those minutes? If not, I'm looking for a motion to receive the minutes for April 27.
I so move.
Moved by Richard, second by?
I'll second that.
Second by Ron. All in favor of receiving the minutes? Anyone? Anyone opposed? And that's carried. Next, we have business arising from the minutes. There were three items that were sent back to administration to deal with. There were a couple of questions. What in regards to byline your report? There's an inquiry about some signs up on power poles, public property and the bylaw department has followed up on this and to be removed by May the 14th. Counselor also asked about banning grad sales. And with that, there was a discussion at the provincial level about grad sales were not to be allowed. And Jessica had put that out in our buoyant as well as our city website, saying that at this point, grad sales will not be allowed. And the other one was a update on the boiler subscription numbers. And it looks like it's more than doubled since January. So I'm, I think it's, it's a good response. It's a great feature that the city has putting stuff out like that. Looking for a motion to receive the report?
Tom, I'll make that motion.
Okay, you have a second or?
Glenn.
Second by Glenn, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that is carried. All right, moving on to council committee reports, things that, things that council has attended their meetings of their subcommittees, et cetera. I'm just going to start off here, Ron.
Uh, no real meetings, just kind of communicating through email. Trevor's working on doing as much as he can online through Facebook. He's redoing some research on a virtual job tour, job fair, I guess. And just trying to keep the business community communicating and trying to help each other get through this.
Okay. Anything else there, Ron?
I know that's it.
Okay, moving on, Richard?
Nothing for me.
Nothing for you? Glenn?
Nothing in the past week.
Conrad?
Nothing in the last couple of weeks.
Tom?
No.
Curtis?
Nothing in the past weeks, but we do have a Parks and Rec allocation grant tomorrow night. To give out the spring dollars for SaaS lotteries.
Okay. That was, that was the one that was cut off the, at the end of March. Is that correct?
That's correct. It had to be rescheduled. Yeah.
Okay. I did have, just as a note, I had someone contact me about that and I wasn't aware that the allocation was postponed. So I think the person had contacted City Hall just to find out, I think I put her towards Ray Dean because she sits as the recording secretary on Parks and Rec. So I will follow up with this person later. Just let her know. Sorry, what, what day are you doing that, Curtis?
Moron 7.
Tuesday at 7. Okay. Thank you.
Got no problem.
All right. Nothing, nothing really new for myself, other than weekly conference calls with city mayors and then Minister Carr have been in contact a little bit with Minister of Rural and Remote Health, Minister Keating, just giving us a heads up of what's going on in the community, et cetera, in regards to the COVID and the road blockades or check stops, if you will. One, one thing I did mention to Minister Keating was with all the check stops that they have, there was nothing going on on Highway 903. So I believe that's been addressed and there has been check stops, blockade set up there. The, as far as the check stops go, when they originally were set up in the northern communities, primarily they were being manned by local fire crews, local people. As of a week ago Friday, they were being manned by provincial authorities, just whether it be COs, corrections, et cetera, just to give a little more authority, if you will, at these check stops and hopefully curbing down some of the transient traffic that had, had been going on and wasn't anything to do with essential services and et cetera. So that's basically where I've been had a few phone calls from concerned citizens about this and that. And I answered the best I could. And what I couldn't answer, I passed them off to would have been Jessica last week, just said phone City Hall and we'll get information to them. Other than that, that's about it for myself. Okay. Moving on correspondence, post office must be closed. There is no correspondence. Emails, none. Moving on council inquiries, this is where we as council have the opportunity to ask administration questions, make comments, concerns, and we can deal with them from there. I'm going to start off on the opposite end from where we left off. Curtis, do you have anything?
Nope, nothing.
Okay. Tom?
Uh, just for interest, the paving, is it started Diana or they moved in yet?
Yeah, the contractors arrived on Sunday evening and they're doing prep work this week. And I believe the asphalt plant is moving up here at the start of next week.
Okay, I guess sort of, where does it, I guess the other question is then, oh, that's good. And, and they're, we're able to get access, they're in the campground, eh? There's some of them.
So we are able to have our campground opened to our contractors and not open to the public. That is what our plan is for the summer because there's a number of projects by the city and then also the long-term care facility and stuff like that, that will likely keep the campground busy. And so, yeah, we were able to facilitate that just because it's not open to the public.
Yeah, and I think there is starting on that Kojan plant out there too, aren't they at Norse out there too?
Correct. So that would be one of the local projects that we could accommodate at the campground. Yeah. And in the long-term care facility was the other one. And we had the lift station build starting in June as well. So we expect that the campground can kept busy enough with social distancing and the different restrictions in place for, for the season if we open it up to contractors.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And, and just, just to expand on that a little bit, the campgrounds would not have been open until June the first because of the SaaS quarter. But Diana had submitted a request stating what we were looking to do with just having our contractors being allowed to go into there with the 50% like half the campsites open and the ministry had accommodated our requests. So that, that made it a little bit easier for the contractors that were going to be scrambling, trying to find a place to stay. So thanks Diana for doing that. Anything else, Tom?
No.
Okay, Conrad?
Um, the gravel pile that's out in the arena parking lot. What's up for Diana?
I understand for the paving contractor.
Like they're, they're not going to be paving, like having their batch plant set up there, are they?
No, I don't believe so, but I can check.
Yeah.
Okay, so you'll, you'll check in. Can you just shoot us an email back? Because that was one of my concerns that I was going to bring up at the end. Having a batch plant set up there might not be all that conducive around the residential area. Anything else, Conrad?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Glenn?
I had a couple of concerns about the compost site. The first one being that it was a very busy weekend and it wasn't cleaned up on Friday. So by Sunday night, it was covered half of the parking lot. I don't know what the crew were doing. I'm sure they were busy, but if at all possible in the spring here, if it could be cleaned up for the weekend, it would be good. The second concern is the size of some of the logs that are dropped there are way beyond what our chipper can handle. And I understand that's a ongoing challenge. My only comment would be that when I stand and look, I can't see the sign. And I certainly can't read the sign that says what size dimension. I wonder if a sign toward the entrance where people coming in, it would clearly be stated, no logs larger than four inches or eight or whatever our chipper can handle. It might. I, I think that somebody could plead ignorance quite easily because a lot of people drop off the big logs and then it's nuisance for the the crews to try to deal with. So those two thoughts.
Thanks very much for that, Glenn. And definitely my discussion today and, and previously, I think last week was like, was a little bit harried getting the seasonal staff started, but their, their goal will, will be to have, to ensure that it's cleaned up on a Friday prior to the weekend. And I will look into your concern about the location of the sign. I know the size of the logs has been an ongoing concern. So we will look into that definitely.
Something to consider.
Okay, anything else, Glenn?
No.
Richard?
I just had two questions. Just wondering if we have enough staff to handle all the street sweeper needs that we have for the next month or so. And and if we'll have enough on the crew to do pothole repairs to meet that demand of all the holes that are forming on the streets.
Uh, my understanding is that there will be plenty of staff to do the pothole repair, the street sweeper repair will depend, or the street sweeper duties will depend on having a staff person who's trained on it available. But we have asked that that be an area of focus for this season. So I expect that it will not be an issue.
And the other question I had was, is we, I don't imagine we have, but we got any kind of update on how much money, extra money will be receiving from the MEE program that the province announced last week?
So that's for the infrastructure funding, the $2 billion that they, the couple of billion dollars that they announced. We received details on that if, if that's the one you're referring.
According to my calculations, it would look like we'd get around $600,000 more this year.
That would be ours if they go, that was our calculation as well, if they went on a straight per capita basis.
I think they are. That was my understanding. That part of that program was per capita. So.
That was mine as well. And the city managers have requested confirmation from the province on that. And we have not received that confirmation.
Okay.
Yep. That's how I heard it as well. It was a per capita, but there was nothing finalized sent out that I know of. I know the, that, that's what the talk was at the, at the last phone conference that we had.
I can undertake that if we hear anything in between council meetings that will make council aware of it.
They should be tomorrow, Diana. That's what they said at the announcement. That's what I asked.
Okay, anything else, Richard?
Well, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ron, do you have anything?
Nothing this time.
Okay. One thing on Fifth Street and the last park, I know we had discussed this a little bit previously about I think Curtis had brought this up with, with some of the lilac trees that are on, there's like four rows of lilac trees along Third, sorry, Fifth Street going in all along Lions Park, kind of a garbage catchall for everything. I did have a Kevin actually asked me what my thoughts would be if Parks and Rec were to remove one or two or two and a half rows of that. So something that I was going to shoot out there, maybe just to get a nods from everyone. He thought that as far as keeping the grass down, getting in there with the moors, with the four trees, they're getting kind of overgrown. His suggestion would be to take a portion of them down.
Merlin, can I ask, can we maybe just get advice from somebody who knows? Because my understanding for lilacs bushes is that they don't get crowded out, they get overgrown.
Okay, okay.
Then they get, get too big and they should be cut down. And I'm not a green thumb or an expert, but I, it might just be something we want to, to ask. Ask somebody else a question on before we.
Yeah, if they're proved on properly, they'll come back.
Yeah.
So I think there was, there is a seasonal employee that is somewhat of a green thumb. But I think what Kevin was asking was just if, if he went through and did the proper research as to, as far as keeping them clean and tidy, if it would be okay with councils to remove some of the bushes. And I said, I would bring it to the council meeting just as a discussion to kind of get, not, not saying to tell him to go ahead and do it, but just to kind of get a heads up from the, the sixth council and see what your thoughts are on, if that's all right.
Hello, Tommy. Yeah, I'm here for not to see it. Go, go ahead, go ahead, Richard. Sorry.
I just said if they're not dead, I would prefer not to see any of them.
Okay, Tom?
Well, I would, I would, I would certainly like to see him if they could prune down because I know last year when we were getting some issues with, I know I had talked to a few people who were talking about the grass cutting and stuff. And that was always the area that looked the worst. And I know it's really difficult to get in there with, because the trees are getting real big too. So I, I suppose if they had a plan where we still had the nice, some nice well looked after lilacs. And if they had to remove a few to, to, to help with the maintenance side of it, I don't think it would detract at all. It might, the other ones probably fill in anyway.
I would like to see them, if we take a tree out, plant a tree. It doesn't have to be in the same area. If that's overcrowded, but around the bald diamonds, there could be a lot more trees. It's either too windy and cold or too hot without shade. So if you have to take a tree out for whatever reason, plant a tree. I don't think there's too many trees in Lions Park. They might not be where they belong and they may, you know, it's 30 years old. So it's, or 40 years old. So it's appropriate to change things, but don't just start taking trees out without adding them back someplace.
Okay. Connor, do you have any? Nope. Curtis?
Oh, 100% clean up those lilacs. Don't take them out, but definitely prune them and cut them down properly.
Okay. Ron?
You know, I agree. I mean, lilac makes a nice hedge as if it's taken care of because they can get out of control. But I agree with, with Glenn as well. If we're gonna, if we need to take some of, definitely put some back in there.
Okay, so Diana, can I just kind of pass it off to you to maybe be in contact with Kevin? Because I know he does have one seasonal staff that is quite a green thumb and.
That's the one who takes care of our plants. So.
Yep, she's very capable of it and just kind of leave it in your and his hands. If that's all right? That makes sense? All right. We're through there. Old business. I'm seeing none. We're going to move on to new business. First item is a property tax rate review. I did have a little bit of discussion with Diana on this, this morning. I did read it over. I wonder, shall I? There's a lot of information there. I'm going to give my version of what, what my thoughts are. Or, and then we can maybe turn it over to Jessica because she prepared the file, went through all the numbers and, and stuff. So basically how I see it, we had discussed 1.6% tax revenue increase, but because of the assessments, et cetera, a lot of, I shouldn't say a lot, a majority of the final taxation to properties goes down just because of the reassessment. So I think I'm just going to leave it at that. And Diana or Jessica, I guess Diana probably to start, if you want to pass over to Jessica to talk about it, then we can have a discussion here amongst council.
Uh, yeah, no, I think that covers the comments. This was based on the direction that administration received at the time the budget was adopted, which was a 1.6% increase to tax revenue. As the mayor mentioned, because we saw a 4% increase to our assessments, we that does help spread out the burden and the 1.6% increase to tax revenue can be accomplished with the vast majority of people seeing a small decrease to their taxes. So I will turn it over to Jessica for any highlights beyond that.
Um, not a lot to add that's not in this report already, as those of you who are around last year when we that passes, note, last year we saw a lot of assessment decreases across commercial properties that are now gone back up to where they were. We do have an inquiry into SAMA on that. But those are the ones typically that you'll see in these properties where there's a, there's a jump. You'll note that there was a a decrease to their taxes last year. If you compare the 2018 to 2020, they're fairly similar in most of those instances. It's not a direct one-to-one. There are unfortunately some people who got hit with an ugly tax increase last year who are going to hit, get hit with another tax increase this year because of their assessment change. It is open till July 1st, which is well after we will have any tax notices out. So that may also impact the net revenue at the end of the day. But if you have any specific questions, let me know.
We have no idea why SAMA created such a fluctuation within one year.
Um, I understanding from the email we received was our direction was to wait for them to be appealed and that they did indicate that it was a data entry error on that part. My response is going to be, I don't know why we would wait for people to appeal it if that was the case, but.
Yeah.
Sorry, just your comment, the data entry was, was on the last assessment, is that correct?
My understanding is the change that saw people see a decrease last year in their assessment value was a data entry error. And that's changed for this year. But my understanding is also the question was asked last year and we did not receive that response. So.
Okay.
Do you have any idea how much of an increase in the tax rebate will be affecting this year's budget? From the the rebate program or tax incentive policy of 2018?
We did budget $60,000 this year for rebates, which I believe is a $20,000 increase over last year's budget. And likely that number will be close based on some preliminary estimates.
Sorry, we, we kind of went at this backwards without bringing forth this review, but we can just carry on conversation if that's good with everyone. If we need to. Does anyone have any other questions? I know there's lots of information there. Jessica is what had went through and did that. But I think ultimately as I mentioned previously, the, the modest 1.6%, I know with, with the COVID and stuff now may be somewhat affecting, but just with the, with the higher set, the 4% higher, higher assessment value this year, it's created more of a, more of a taxation income. So sticking at that 1.6, it's, it's not affecting the majority of people are not being affected or getting a, or seeing a lessening in their taxes. So does anyone else have any comments or questions? Ron, Glenn?
Oh.
Conrad?
No, I mean, it's a policy we drafted before. And I know there would have been an error on SAMA's part, but I think overall, we're still going to see a decrease in revenue. Isn't that correct? Based on this report?
No.
I thought, that's what I thought I read.
I see that.
The revenue increase is 1.6% over last year. Your effective pass rate is decreasing slightly because your assessment base went up more than 1.6%.
Yeah, I think I read in there, Jessica, the 1.6% is about $70,000, right? 76,200.
Yeah. Yep, there is. Okay, any other questions? Curtis, do you have anything?
I, I think we need to hold to be honest with you.
Okay, we're looking for a motion on the recommendation as presented.
I'll, I'll recommend that administration draft the tax rate by law for 2020 in accordance with the property tax policy and the 2020
I'll, I'll recommend that administration draft the tax rate by law for 2020 in accordance with the property tax policy and the 2020 budgeted tax revenue increase of 1.6%.
Curtis will second.
Curtis will second. Uh, any further discussion? Conrad, do you have anything else to add?
No, I'm good.
Curtis?
No.
Okay, all in favor of? Anyone opposed? And that is carried. Thanks for putting that together. Uh, next is, uh, a bylaw that we would like to bring to the table for 2020 tax exemptions. Uh, there were three applications that were brought forth to the city. Now we have a recommendation brought from administration. We should bring it to the table. Anyone?
Oh, I'll do it. The bylaw of number four, 20 point, two, number four, 2020, a taxes engine by law be introduced and read a first time.
Okay, you have a seconder for that?
I'll second it.
Second by Ron? Any discussion, Tom?
No, I think this falls within the policy, uh, we had developed and, uh, yeah, no, no, nothing else.
Okay, Ron, do you have anything to add?
Nope, nothing.
Okay, all in favor of, uh, giving it first reading tonight? Anyone opposed? And that's carried. Now we may give, uh, all three readings tonight, as long as we have unanimous approval, support for this. Is someone willing to take this to second reading? Sorry, we have to vote to see if we will.
You only have, you only have to vote unanimously to do the third reading.
Okay.
You can do the second, you can do the second reading if somebody wants to make that motion. And then you would need a unanimous vote in order to take it to, uh, third reading at this.
Third reading and adopting it, okay?
I'll move that second reading. I'll move the second reading then, that bylaw number four, 2020, a tax exemption by law be introduced and read a second time.
You have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Second by Richard? Any other comments, Conrad?
No.
Richard?
No, I presume this turning point, that's the one on Third Street East?
That's correct.
That's correct.
Okay, anyone else have any comments? Okay, all in favor of, uh, giving it a second reading? Anyone, uh, anyone opposed? That's carried.
I think a motion Merlin?
Yep.
To go to reading? For unanimous approval.
Okay, we, uh, looking for a seconder for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Ron, okay, this motion is to, has to be unanimous in order for us to take it to the third reading and adopt it. So all in favor, I'm going to scroll through. Anyone opposed? Nope. Okay, that is carried. Okay, we'll, uh, send it to the third, third reading, go ahead.
Bylaw number four, 2020, a tax exemption by law be introduced and read a third time and adopted.
Do we have a seconder for that?
I'll second.
Second by Ron, any final comments? All in favor of? Anyone opposed? That's carried. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, no notice of motions. Sorry. Uh, looking to move to a closed meeting, pardon me.
Curtis?
Curtis, go ahead.
City council moved to a closed meeting, consider the following items, the future budget matter, matter related to legal advice and two matters related to management personnel.
Do we have a seconder for that?
I'll second.
Second by Ron, all in favor? Anyone opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much for the short meeting tonight. Thank you for the guests for joining us. We'll just take a couple of minutes and, uh, I just have to respond to this text, you're pardon me. And then we'll just move into the in camera.
Are we off of live stream, Jessica?